Caban Owen. Let me see, Paula Haney, Jaime Gomez, Elde Ray, Mary Galucci on the phone from the board. And we have Dr. Tracy Youngberg and a number of staff on, and Claire Galvin. So we're just gonna hope that Mark Doyle and Lisa Dunick join us. If somebody who's not running this meeting wouldn't mind texting them just to see if they're joining.
I can text Mark.
Okay, so we're gonna get started and the first order of business is public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Give you a second to chime in, unmute yourself if you want to speak during public comment. Okay. Hearing none, we're gonna move forward to the approval of our Board of Education meeting minutes from May 14th, 2020. And I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
So moved by Paula. Is there a second? Second by Katina. Is there any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote and it has to be done by roll call, I'm assuming still.
Ms. Hyde, I can do the roll call.
Thank you. Thank you, Janet Testa. Okay. You're on.
Okay, one second, I'm just gonna share my screen with you.
Okay.
Okay. Dr. Caban Owen.
Hi.
Ms. Dunick.
She said she was joining us, but she's not here yet.
Okay.
Mr. Doyle.
I texted, but I haven't heard from him.
Neither have I.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye. Okay, the motion passes, thank you very much. And thank you to the other board members who have reached out to the two who aren't with us yet. And so now we're gonna get on to the superintendent's reports. I'm gonna hand it over to you, Dr. Youngberg.
Everybody.
Hi.
Just a few housekeeping items to share with the board and then a little bit of background on some of the things that are happening as they relate to the class of 2020's graduation ceremony. So the first is I'm happy to announce that the district has settled both the MNJ and East Con transportation bills. I thank the board members for their pointed questions, but we have reached a settlement and we're in the process of making those payments, so that's taken care of. I know, I see thumbs up, that's true story. I wanted to let the board members know that I attended last Thursday night. I joined the class of 2020 in a Google Hangout. They called it the senior soiree. I wasn't sure if I was dressed appropriately or not, but I joined them. I told them that I wanted to meet with them to get a sense of who they were as a class, because obviously if they were in school, I would be going over to the high school and, you know, joining in activities and having conversations with them, but not having them here has been really difficult, really difficult. So I joined the soiree and got to talk to, I think there were either eight or nine people, because one student sort of popped in and out. And they were sharing information with me about the class of 2020. And it was really nice to hear them describe themselves as this cohesive, driven unit that really seems to be connected. And they all seem to believe that they're gonna stay, you know, connected to each other after high school and they, they shared some of their hopes and dreams and told me a lot about them in just, you know, a short period of time. So I was very happy to join that Google Hangout. I also wanted to let the board members know that today, myself, Mr. Weathers and Ms. Parsiac, we met with all the building principals, as well as the pupil services department, to discuss the plans and we'll be meeting with facilities soon. I see Dawn in the upper right-hand corner there, and our other departments as well. But we were discussing today what we would do in the event that the Board of Finance, that our budget request, you know, isn't honored and we have to make those really tough decisions. So we had some meetings today sort of to triage what that might look like, so that we're prepared for when the decision is made. We know how to move forward from there. So we'll obviously be using a formula, a staffing to student ratio to formula to ensure equity across our schools. And the goal is always to make sure that the cuts don't impact kids, which I'm not sure that's entirely possible, but we're gonna do the best we can to make the impact, to have the least direct impact on students as possible. And I just want to thank the principals for being so open. They had, they really came with a solutions-minded focus and they were really trying to solve problems with us, like what would we do if? We obviously know that coming back to school after COVID-19 is, is going to be very interesting, to say the least. So any help, you know, we're gonna maintain this whole team structure to get through anything we have to deal with when it comes to the budget. So I just wanted to keep the board informed on that. Also wanted to let you know, if you haven't already heard, there is a petition, a change.org petition that's going around requesting that Wyndham High School's class of 2020 have an in-person graduation, possibly at Mansfield Drive-In. So I just wanted to, to open up the discussion, explain to the board where we stand on all of this. And just to once again, share the fact that I, I too am completely heartbroken about them not having a traditional ceremony. I think, you know, it's really not, it's not a great thing for anyone, but I wanted to just sort of give you some background about it. And let you know that there is gonna be some formal information released from the district and, and the Wyndham High School leadership team tomorrow, but I just wanted to sort of fill you in. So I think most of you know, we're a part of the North Central Department of Public Health, which is led by Patrice Sullick. She's the Department of Health leader in that. I guess there's various departments of public health all over the state of Connecticut. Ours involves districts like Ellington and Enfield and East Windsor, Vernon, places like that. So we meet weekly with the Department of Public Health, as we do superintendent's meet weekly with the Commissioner of Education and the Governor. And so we were told that having an in-person graduation, that the Department of Public Health, because they weren't actually consulted initially, would put the stamp of approval on an in-person graduation. They would do that as long as we understood that an in-person graduation would most definitely involve transmission of the disease, of the virus. They said, you need to understand that if you bring people together, there's like, there's the likelihood of transmission. And that if that happens, you need to be open to the idea that they're going to come back to the district and ask you to be involved in the, in the trace, what are they, I'm like...
The tracing?
Yeah. The contact trace process. I couldn't think of it for a second. And they said the district needs to be aware that you will be involved in the contract, contact tracing process, because in the likelihood of a community outbreak, they're gonna wanna know where it started. So as long as you're okay with that, knowing that it could lead to a community outbreak, they will stamp a drive-in-like process for graduation. So I was a little uncomfortable with that, I'll just be perfectly honest. I, you know, I want the kids more than anything to have as close to a traditional ceremony as possible, but knowing how hard this whole town has worked to keep the numbers of COVID-19 cases down, it seemed very, seemed like a very big gamble to say, yes, we're gonna have an in-person celebration, knowing that it could lead to a community outbreak. So trying to sort of weigh that, you know, that whole thing. So the reason why I actually encouraged the leadership team not to plan a for, a traditional or a drive-in, you know, graduation was for that reason, because there's no way to actually control what people will do when you get them together. So if we were to say book, say we were to find the $5,000, which I know is not impossible, but it, it does, you know, involve money. But let's say we find the $5,000 and we get the school system to come to a drive-in celebration or drive-in ceremony, there's no way to actually guarantee that people are going to stay in their cars and there's no way to guarantee that they're going to exercise social distancing. And I don't know how you police that in a group as large as we would have at graduation. I also know from the meetings with the Department of Public Health, that they literally said you could plan a meeting, you could plan a ceremony and have it canceled that day. Because if there's ever any, if the governor decides, sort of like what he did with the hair salons, that he decided the night before that they weren't going to open, he could do the same thing to your graduation ceremony. The public health, Department of Public Health could shut it down, or the governor's office could shut it down. They also said that anytime you bring people together, you run the risk of transmission of the virus, because they more than likely will have to share restrooms. And how are you going to maintain cleanliness in restrooms? So they basically went through all of these things that we had to consider. And it didn't seem to me, you know, and obviously it's a, it's a, it's an emotional decision, right? And people come at it from many different angles and I respect the decisions that my colleagues in other districts made, but for me, it just seemed like too big of a gamble, knowing how much this town has sacrificed already to try to keep people safe, particularly our first responders, because they would, our police department would be involved in trying to police this event and they could potentially also be put in harm's way. So I err on the side of caution and I, you know, I opened it up to discussion, I'd love to hear your feedback, but I just wanted you to know that, coming from a place of caution, kind of thinking like a mama. And that's why I went the route we're going, which is which a virtual ceremony with a drive-through diploma pickup. You're gonna get some information tomorrow, but the students are gonna have the ability to walk across the stage. We're gonna try to make it as, as real or as traditional as we possibly can under these very strange circumstances, but I did weigh the, weigh the options and I thought about my own, my own child, that I want my, my own son who graduates a year from now to be potentially put in harm's way for an hour-long ceremony. And I know it, it represents a milestone in their lives and I know how important it is. Like I said, my heart is broken, but that's the reason why I decided to encourage Ms. Kavanaugh and the leadership team to go with a virtual ceremony.
So, thank you. I'm gonna open it up for discussion. Tracy Lambert, before I call on you, I just want a note for Janet, that Mark Doyle joined at 6:36 and Lisa Dunick joined at 6:39. Thank you, we're happy to have you both here. So Tracy Lambert.
Yeah, Dr. Youngberg, I couldn't agree with you more. There's a question going on, the voices and volunteers, and I generally only weigh in with factual information. And I said something similar to what you just said, that the Board of Health, the Commissioner, CAPS, NKAB have all recommended that we not do in-person, in-person graduations, because it could get shut down that morning and we could be left with nothing. And I also said that one child getting this disease and possibly dying, or somebody's grandmother, I mean, my kids lost their grandfather during this, not to COVID, during this whole lockdown and it's been hard for them, because they haven't had the closure that somebody would normally wanna have on top of everything else. But one child getting sick from this, spending time in the hospital, losing their life, God forbid, anything like that, isn't worth a two-hour ceremony to me. That the school's trying to put lots of things in place. Principal Kavanaugh sent a phone call and an email today saying things that she's doing for senior graduation week and that they're really trying hard. A lot of the community isn't understanding that they're feeling gypped and I have to admit, I'm feeling gypped too, but it's not the district's fault, it's the disease's fault. And you have to be able to separate that. So I try to keep it factual, I'm sure Ms. Chady will, you know, attest to the fact that I've only ever put facts out there, not ocean and stuff like that. And it's breaking my heart, because I kept this kid alive for 18 years to do this and now we're all being gypped of it, not just our seniors, but the parents. But I've tried to defend the fact that it's not worth all the work to not have anything if it gets shut down at the very last minute. And I'd rather prepare for all of this and be able to have the kids walk across the stage, which I think is fabulous, if it can help. But I've heard of other high schools and other districts where they try to do something like this. My in-laws live out west, my sister and brother-in-law, and they're already having graduations and kids are bunching up in their cars after and hugging and kissing and that just opens the invitation for the disease to be spread if it's out there. So I've totally defended this, I don't like it, I'm not happy about it, but it's better to be safe than sorry. And a two-hour ceremony isn't worth one of our kids' lives.
Totally agree, thank you so much for that. I really appreciate hearing you from a mama of someone who would be walking across the stage. That's very helpful.
Yes, I love our kids, all of them, so.
Is there anybody else who would like to weigh in on this, or Katina?
I am totally in agreement with the two of you. What can I say? As you hear me say often, in Wyndham, they're all our kids and I don't know that I would go, even when I have a graduate. I think some parents wouldn't even attend. So all, all the feelings are valid and logical and yes, and we should not risk one of us.
Thanks, Katina, I appreciate hearing that as well.
Anybody else like to speak up on this matter? Okay. So, um, thank you for sharing your reasoning and your rationale for, for all of this and, and I know, I know much of the central office staff and the other administrators who weighed in this, in on this, I'm sure, are all thinking of the students and their families first. And so I appreciate that. I'm assuming you're gonna be responding to this petition that you've gotten?
Yes, we're, we're gonna actually, the district's gonna release a statement about it and the students have actually contacted me. They've asked for a meeting, a, you know, virtual meeting, which I will obviously grant them, because I want them to understand that this was not made to make anyone feel, you know, bad. This was made out of caution and, and care and concern for them. So I am gonna grant them the, the virtual meeting and they should have more information. They, I think, like you said, there was a, the phone call went out today and I think there'll be more information released tomorrow. We wanna make sure they know, we're really trying to make them feel special. We have a couple things, activities planned and we're not in any way, we totally understand where they're coming from. I, I actually commended one of the, the class officers for reaching out to me, because she really was advocating for the students. She was using the democratic process to state her case and explain why I should rethink my decision. And, and I'm gonna obviously talk to them virtually and, and explain my reasoning. Yes, Katina, I see, hand up.
Yes, I, I called the Chronicle today, thinking that our family would sponsor a whole page with 140-some pictures of all the kids, just, and they said they are doing that, they are already have communicated with Ms. Kavanaugh, all 100-and-some kids, pictures are gonna be shown for free in the Chronicle. And the second thing is I've been in talks with the town of Wyndham to see if we can have the pictures in that billboard, electronic billboard, and I still have to, yes, be obstinate and continue asking, but, well, so that's happening. You can tell the kids their picture is gonna be in the paper.
Great. And, and Tracy Lambert, I see that you're eating your dinner, but you may wanna share with folks what's come, what's coming to fruition around the photography. Thank you.
Thought I stopped the video, I'm so sorry.
You worked all day, we get it.
I worked all day today, I just finished the dinner, I'm so, so sorry, I didn't think you guys...
It's okay, don't worry.
Got rid of it. Um, what did you ask, Lynn? I'm so morde...
I was wondering whether you could fill us in on the photography plans.
Oh, um, there's a Calendly app that I'm using to have the students sign up virtually, can you hear me? To have the students sign up online. We are meeting in 20-minute increments at the high school. I texted Ms. Kavanaugh today and she said that the marquee would be ready for Thursday morning at the latest, because that's when the first wave of kids start. I'm doing 20-minute increments on every day but Tuesday, because I have to be at work all day on Tuesday. Doing 20-minute increments, I'm doing pictures like in front of the Wyndham sign, in front of the marquee, in front of the high school. Family, friends, parents, as long as they're comfortable with the social distancing, I'm fine with it, because I've been working throughout this entire lockdown, so I've been exposed to lots of people, but my husband has had two negative COVID tests, so I feel like I'm okay at this point. His last one was last week. If he doesn't have it, I'm assuming I don't have it, because we spend time together. And they can bring their pets, they can bring whatever they want. There's a few Wyndham students from neighboring schools that I, you know, reached out to and if they wanted me to do, if they're Wyndham kids and they wanted me to do it, then I'm happy to do that. If other people want me to do pictures, I just ask for a donation to the soup kitchen instead of a cash donation to me. I, one, can't profit from this, but two, I don't want to, this isn't about me, this is about the kids. So if they felt, Katina had me do pictures of her daughter and I said, if you really feel strongly about paying, you just give it to the soup kitchen, because I'm working more hours than I can handle right now. So, and however they wanna do it, with their cap and gown, with their favorite people, with their pets, I'm happy to do pictures in 20 minutes increments. I've had at least 30 sign up so far. I'm hoping there's something like, you know, congratulations, class of 2020 on the marquee, so I can stand students out there. All I'm asking is you guys continue to pray for good weather, because it's really difficult if it's pouring out, so.
Thank you for arranging that, that's a really nice service.
It's my small talent that I can give, but I'm happy to do anything for these kids. I really, I've said on Facebook, I've said other places, like I'm grieving the fact that I don't get this last graduation from my last child, but this is what I can do to make it a little bit better and give them a little bit of something in their cap and gown. And I've told Ms. Kavanaugh, they wanted me to do pictures the night of graduation, like as the kids walk across the stage, I'll do my, to do that too, because...
Excellent.
Used to me doing other stuff on their graduation nights and everything anyway, they're all good ones.
Thank you so much and I, I love the idea of supporting the soup kitchen, to say thank you to you, that's a great idea.
Well, I work at Willards right next door and they have seen such a huge increase in their...
Yeah.
Ray Aramini is a good friend of mine and he has said that, you know, from one week to another, they went from like five or 600 people they serve in a day to almost 3,000. Panicking over getting supplies and Andrew works at Willards and goes over on Fridays and loads the truck and thousands of pounds of food that get handed out every week. Certainly, they need the money more than I do and I'm happy to be able to throw any, you know, any donations their way that I possibly can. So that's just my way of giving back, so.
Thank you.
Lynn, I wasn't sure if Margaret had anything else to add on the senior, the senior activities. I know you've been...
And Margaret.
She's trying to unmute.
Here we are, trying to unmute.
Yeah.
Yes, um, thank you, Dr. Youngberg. I did sit today with the high school team and we are putting together a combination of a press release and a letter being mailed out to all the families and they touched on some of that in the all-call today. I just wanted to extend more on what Dr. Caban Owen said about the Chronicle. So the publisher, Mr. Schroeder, is creating a special section that will feature all of the local high schools. They are going to feature photos as well as other speeches and little excerpts from the graduation programs themselves in a special section. And they've been gracious enough to offer to overprint that, so that every graduate will get a copy of that section as part of their, you know, of their mementos from this. So they, they are selling some little ads very reasonably, will be posting, sharing that out on social media and, and with families, so that you can do well wishes, little kind of business card ads that are very affordable. So that's a really nice community add-on. And we've also had some other great community support with donations of lawn signs, so that the entire Wyndham High School lawn will be filled with individual signs, tribute to every graduate, that we will have out there, we'll have some nice tribute on the town hall, on the front of the town hall with some banners. And I just think that the, the opportunity during senior week for our community to salute our graduates on June the 12th in this, this car parade is gonna be fabulous. So the graduates are going to form a parade, they're coming up with a parade route now, they will parade by every graduate's home and all throughout the community. And this is gonna be a great opportunity, I think, to engage the, the entire Wyndham community more so than normal at graduation time. And it's going to be a great way for everyone to celebrate. So all of these details you will see in the press releases that will be coming out and the, the details, but I think that the high school team's really working hard between social media and Instagrams and videos to make sure that the kids do feel celebrated.
Thank you.
Thanks, Margaret.
And the, the question that Dr. Caban Owen just posted about the signs, the signs are being donated by a very generous community member. So they're all taken care of, it's a really nice gift.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else you wanna, oh, Tracy Lambert, go ahead.
Um, Project Grad, because we usually raise funds and do an event the evening of graduation to keep our students safe. Project Grad, the Booster Club, providing lawn signs to students in their homes. I'm sure Ms. Ray can speak about that a little more if she wants to. And the PTSO is providing t-shirts to all of our seniors with the students' names on the back. There was a, and to design the t-shirts. Ms. Ray has been fabulous about doing that part of it, everybody's doing their part. There's something that I love to see, like all the parents are speaking up. This parent that was haranguing us about not having an in-person graduation on Facebook and I respect her view, but very angry about it. I said, there's three members of the board that have seniors and we're all fighting for everything we can get, but safely, we don't want it to be something that dissolves the community. So other people are stepping up, including that one member that's doing signs on the high school front lawn and stuff like that. Everybody's stepping up and really pitching in and trying to make this as vibrant a graduation as we possibly can, while still respecting protocol and keeping everybody safe.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you to Elde too, for all that work.
Yes, thank you, Elde. I can't see her, but I can see she's on. Thank you, Elde.
So, um, is there anything else you wanna report to us under superintendent's report? You're on mute.
Sorry about that, that's all I had for you tonight, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have committee reports and we have just one committee report tonight and that's from Mark Doyle, Finance and Audit Committee.
Yeah, we met last week. I think you actually shared most of it, because I had communication problems, but we reviewed the busing information and decided it was time to release the payment for that. And then we had discussion about the Health Reserve Fund. We asked for information from Mr. Johnson and I think Rita has some update for us on where we're at with the Health Reserve Fund. Rita?
Yeah, so I did get a balance sheet from Chris Johnson. It has both the Board of Ed and, and the town on it. It looks like we have a positive balance of about $200,000. I emailed him back about an adjustment, I haven't heard back from him, so I'm gonna say it's 200, the report says 472, but I know there's an adjustment he has to make. So as of, as of April 30th, he's showing a positive $200,000.
So Mark, is there anything you wanna add about sort of where you think we're gonna land at the end of the year?
Well, I think as long as the reserves stay positive, we should be pretty much coming in even. We should not have a major deficit or surplus, right Rita? We should be pretty much...
Yeah, I mean, the surplus that we do have, you know, might need to go into the reserves, like we talked, but, um, the claims are low. So I, I, I know everybody's anticipating that, that 200,000 is probably gonna grow a little bit, because people are not going to the doctors. So, yeah, I think we're going to break even because of that and that's pretty much what we talked about.
That would be our goal, is to, is to stay as close to even as possible. Now, any extra we can put into the fund, because we know there'll be more usage perhaps in the following year, but we, we don't wanna go into a deficit for, for this year on top of all the other budget issues we have, so. I think that's it.
Very good news, especially since we had a 0% budget to deal with this year and we didn't find out till, you know, partway through the year. That's a, that's quite a feat. Thank you Rita and Mark for your leadership on the committee and Dr. Youngberg and the rest of the team for working to get us there.
I do wanna say one thing.
Sure, Rita.
There wasn't any transfer requests on this Finance Committee, but we did talk about doing transfers to true up all of the balances, so there's a lot to come.
Yes, so, so at our June 24th meeting, we will be taking action on a number of transfers likely.
Okay.
Any questions? Thank you very much. I think the, the good work that has been done since the forensic analysis was done last year on getting us to this place should be applauded by everybody. This is a really big deal that we have this kind of handle on our budget and we're able to close out the year successfully. Thank you. I see some smiles from some board members and Mark is clapping, thanks. Okay, we have, we have a few action items earlier up on the agenda today, because the second half of the agenda is pretty much dedicated to a separate issue, so we wanted to, to get this business taken care of before we go into the second half of the agenda. So the first item on, on the agenda is the recommended approval of the submission of the IDEA grant application. of the IDEA grant application. And it was in your packet, and I entertain a motion to...
So moved.
So moved by Mark. Do I get a second?
Second, Tracy.
Second by Tracy Lambert. Any discussion on this? Is there anything anybody in the administration wants to say about this?
Tracy, got to unmute.
Sorry about that. This is sort of standard operating procedure. I don't know if Miguel has anything he wants to add, but it's pretty much the same yearly or annual application process. Miguel, anything to add?
Not really. It's, like you said, standard operating procedure. There were no changes to the submission this year. It's done electronically. That's the only change that we've done. And I want to just, if I could do a shout out to Rita, who did an amazing job. She had to do two submissions of the way that data is collected because they updated the way they track it. And so she did a lot of work and put a lot of work into that. And so I appreciate that. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Tracy?
Is it the same as last year, or is it more or less?
The same in terms of the amount?
Yes.
I think it's more or less. Rita probably knows the numbers better than I do in terms of the changes, but it's pretty similar.
I believe it's the same.
It's the same? Okay. Generally, they're the same from year to year. I'd like to encourage as a board to ask for more if we really feel like we can justify it. But if this is what we can justify now, I'm happy to approve it.
Any further discussion? All those. So now we're going to have Janet do roll call first to vote. Janet Testa.
Okay. Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Ms. Dunick. Ms. Dunick?
You got to unmute.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Ms. Eid.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is recommended acceptance of a donation made by the Wyndham Region Community Council to provide food baskets for Wyndham Public School families in need during the COVID-19 crisis in the amount of $2,000. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Tracy Lambert.
Second. Katina.
Okay, motion made by Tracy Lambert, seconded by Katina. Any discussion?
Will a thank you note be written?
Absolutely.
With gratitude.
Absolutely. We all learn good manners from our mothers.
Be grateful, absolutely. Is Mr. Camacho on the call? I don't know if he has anything to add. He was instrumental in getting the donation.
Yes, I am. So, yeah, we have only two families left that we're going to be delivering tomorrow. They've been very grateful. We have pictures that we will make them available as soon as possible.
Thank you. Any questions?
We're making sure to protect privacy.
Absolutely.
Okay. As long as there's releases or okays or whatever, I just want to make sure we're protecting parents' privacy.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions, comments, aside from the fact that this is lovely, that this is happening, and it's too bad that it's needed? Okay, then I'll call on Janet Testa to do a roll call vote.
Dr. Caban Owen.
Aye.
Ms. Dunick.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Ms. Eid.
Aye. Thank you very much, everybody. Motion passes. So now we're on to a couple of discussion items. And the first one is that, you know, the Board of Finance had another meeting last Wednesday. They are set to meet tomorrow evening, and there's a good chance they could be taking action on the town and Board of Ed budgets tomorrow. There also is a possibility that they could decide to wait and get more information about what's coming in from the state or the feds or whatever. But because when they ended the meeting last Wednesday night, it looked, I mean, it sounded like they were getting ready to take action tomorrow evening. So over the past few days, over the weekend, really, I want to thank the staff who helped. We had a meeting, the chair of the Finance and Audit Committee and I, Mark and I, had a meeting with some central office staff on Friday morning and decided that it would be worth writing one more letter to the Board of Finance outlining why we're asking for what we're asking, and what deviation from that request or decreasing that request would do to impact our district, and why we're so, so sure that this is what we need them to do. I'm not being very articulate right now. I think the letter is a lot more articulate, and the board members signed off on us sending it along with Dr. Tracy Youngberg to the Board of Finance. And the letter was shared with the full Board of Ed earlier today, I want to say sometime late this morning before it went out, I mean, about the same time it went out to the Board of Finance. And it just talks about that, you know, it reiterates our request, decreased request down to 7.6% because of the money that we found out about after the fact that is coming into the district that we had not planned on, but does not touch the CARES Act money if that comes in, and other things related to new money to come in that deals with COVID. And it outlines, you know, what's going to happen in the classroom with numerous bullet points if we are faced with a decrease in our budget request. And I just wanted to point that out to you all, make sure that you got it earlier today. If you didn't get it, let us know. And if you feel compelled to get on the phone and talk to some of the Board of Finance members that you may feel like you could have a good conversation with before tomorrow night, or if nothing else, to just make sure they read the letter, because, you know, a lot of things come across people's desks. They're busy, and they have jobs and whatever, and they may waltz into the meeting tomorrow night and not have had a chance to really absorb this letter. Anything that you can do to help with that would be terrific. I'm just going to open it up for discussion. I don't know whether Dr. Youngberg or any of your staff want to say anything either, too. It's up to you.
I think the letter sort of sums up how we're feeling. We obviously want them to honor the Board of Ed's request. And the reason why we had those meetings today with the principals is planning in case they don't honor their request, because we really, we really are certain we're going to have to, Neil was using the word decimate over and over again today. We're going to have to do some serious, make some serious staffing cuts that are going to impact kids, even though we're going to do our best to try not to have the impact directly. So we're just hoping that the Board of Finance makes a decision in support of our students and our staff.
Is there anybody on the board who wants to say anything?
This is Mary.
Hi, Mary. Go ahead.
Hi. I just want to add that, you know, it's so awful that we hadn't had any increase last year, and the idea that it would be less of an increase this year if we had gotten more than a zero last time. Whether people saved that money, you know, it's just, you know, we really have to look at the long term of the constant decimating of this education budget and say that it's time to do the right thing. And also, you know, think about the impact on our community if numerous staff members and teachers and parents are laid off. I mean, I am willing to share the sacrifice of paying more taxes to avoid something that's going to create greater hardship, and especially, you know, now and in the future. So I just think, you know, we go for these annual budget, you know, traumas, but we have to bite the bullet and get this right as a community and move forward. So I just want to emphasize that.
Dr. Galucci, I couldn't agree with you more. And one of the, this is Tracy Youngberg, by the way, one of the things that I was even saying today, just having the conversations with my principals about which positions they might have to cut next year, it's psychologically damaging to them. It was, ask Neil. Neil and I were exhausted. Neil, Rita and I were all exhausted today. It's an emotional discussion, and that's before we've even had a conversation that could potentially mean that a family, many of which who live in Wyndham, could be without jobs as a result of this. So I totally agree with you. It really is trauma. Any way you look at it, it's a traumatic experience to have to explain who you might be losing in 2021. So thank you for saying that, Dr. Galucci.
Yes, Katina.
I think it's high time that the town of Wyndham prioritizes and puts our children first. I keep saying it over and over. I cannot agree more with Mary and Tracy and all of you who have supported the budget. And as I said in my testimonies, at times it feels that is discriminating against our population, which happens to be mostly Latinos, and comes across as very racist. And it's not acceptable. It's not acceptable. We need to, we need to support the budget just completely. And it's high time that we do that in this town. And I am, for the past 38 years, a taxpayer.
Thank you, Katina. Is there anybody else who would like to say something on this topic? Okay.
Sorry.
Elda, go right ahead, Elda.
I apologize for not being on. I had to pick up my car, and I was driving back, and I didn't want, you know, I didn't want to be part of the noise. So anyways, I apologize for not being present, but I actually, I was present. Never mind. So I apologize.
You were listening. You were listening to us, listening to your face.
Yes, I was listening, and I apologize. For, right now, I'm like in a rush mode, so I'm not going to say a lot. I just, I want to say a couple of things before we move on to something else. I want to say just two things. One is, you know, as hard as this graduation is on me as a senior parent, I have to go, I have to err on the side of caution, as the other ladies have already said. And I totally agree with doing whatever we need to do to keep our kids safe, because like Katina said, they are all our kids and not just my number one kid, you know, although, yes, of course, she would love that. But they're kids, you know, that they're going to spend one hour out there, and they might get the virus, and then they'll spend years trying to recover from it. So I get that as a parent. Of course, our kids don't get that because, you know, they want what they want, and they want it now. And of course, you know, it's hard to tell them that we can't, we have to keep you guys safe. So it's going to be hard moving forward to have to continuously tell them that. And Tracy, you know, I back you up.
Thank you, Elda.
So the other part, as far as the budget, you know, this is really sad. Every time that we have to fight, beg, borrow, and fight to try to keep as much money in our budget as possible, you know. And I, like Mary said, feel the same way, that I'm willing to pay whatever to educate our kids because they deserve the best. So I'm willing to do whatever to get the point across to the Board of Finance, since it's them that's controlling the budget this year, not our voters. But they should listen to our voters, because I believe I saw something that it was 85% of the population that was for our budget. So...
Of the people who weighed in, who testified.
Yes. So I'm one of those people. So I back you guys up. I back up our budget 100%. Unfortunately, the taxes will go up, but, you know, our kids are worth it, and that's how I always think of it. So thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Elda.
You're welcome.
Lynn, this is Paula.
Hi, Paula. Go ahead.
Unfortunately, you know, having sat on the Board of Finance and listened to all of the discussions, it is a very difficult position. We live in a very poor town. However, we do have an opportunity this year that we have not had in the past for the Board of Finance to go forward and support our budget, which has not been the case ever before. So my email to the Board of Finance was just that, that they have an unprecedented opportunity to really take control and support our budget in its entirety, because if anything this year, we don't need less.
Thank you, Paula. Is there anybody else who'd like to talk about the budget before we move on? Okay, this is the board chair one more time, saying, if you can find it in yourselves to pick up the phone or send a message to one or more of the Board of Finance members, I think keeping it positive, talking about why we're doing this and the opportunity as Paula put out there that they have to do the right thing, I think that that would be good to get them one more message from us before tomorrow evening. I will say, as the former chair of the Board of Finance, it is very rare that people actually, like, reached out to me personally. Like, you know, they might run into you in the supermarket or say something to you if they're your neighbor, or you're on a ball field with your kid. But for people to call or write to speak to you about this is very impactful, I think. So I encourage folks to do so if they can. Thank you. I want to thank all the staff and parents and students and community members who weighed in in favor of the budget, too. There were very many of them, and it was wonderful. Okay, so we're on to one more discussion item this evening. Is there any, so is there... The board has a policy on the books, policy number 2141, and there is a typo on the agenda. I just want to point out, under action items, it's not 214, but 2141. And that policy sets out that if we're dealing with superintendent, a choice of superintendent, that we do a search. And it talks about how, you know, sort of what we might consider in doing that. And we're going to be taking action on that policy later on on the agenda tonight. And I just want to open it up. Is there anybody who wants to discuss anything about that at this point in time? Okay, hearing none. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss, for discussion concerning the appointment of an acting superintendent of schools. And before we do have the motion, I just want to say, if this motion is approved, we will suspend this Zoom meeting. The board members, Board of Ed members, will get off of the Zoom meeting. of the Zoom meeting, go into executive session in a separate venue, and then come back into the Zoom meeting afterwards for action. Okay? So if you're not a board member and we all disappear, I don't want you to wonder what's going on. Janet Testa will be making sure that people know that the Zoom meeting is still open and it will resume as soon as the board comes back from executive session. So I'd entertain a motion on going into executive session.
So moves Tracy Lambert.
Moved by Tracy Lambert. Second. Second by Jaime, I thought I heard.
Yes, and it's seconded.
Yes, seconded by Jaime.
Will Ms. Testa be singing while we're gone?
Pardon?
Will Ms. Testa be singing while we're gone?
Yes. The Zoom meeting, oh, performing on the Zoom.
Exactly.
I don't think so.
You can dance and nobody will know.
True.
So you can see it later.
Any further, there was a question in the chat about, will we come back to this Zoom meeting? Yes, we will come back to this same Zoom meeting, so the link will be the same when we come back in. That was asked by one of the board members. So the motion's on the floor, it's been seconded, any discussion? Okay, then we'll entertain a roll call vote from Janet Testa.
Okay. Dr. Caban Owen.
Hi.
Ms. Dunick.
Hi.
Mr. Doyle.
Hi.
Dr. Galucci.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez.
Hi.
Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Hi.
Ms. Hyde.
Hi.
Motion passes, so now all board members should get off of this Zoom and go into the private executive session. See you on the other side.
Unless you'd like to sing. I guess.
Hey, Janet, you're not muted, so whenever you want to start singing, go right ahead.
I think Tracy's going to sing instead.
She's got to unmute, though.
Is my notice up?
It is, nice job.
Lynn, you cannot be heard clearly?
Oh, okay.
Oh, now you can, now you can.
I was too far away. Okay, thank you. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We're waiting for Lisa, I think.
No, Lisa's there.
Lisa, Lisa's back, okay, good. Is there anybody we're missing?
I'm here.
You're missing Jaime again.
I'm here.
Jaime's here, yeah.
I didn't see his face.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five.
There you are.
I don't see Tracy Lambert.
So, yeah, we're missing Tracy Lambert. So, yeah, we're missing Tracy Lambert, okay.
She's the one missing, no.
Yeah. Let me just text her.
Okay.
Boy, technology. Thank you, everybody who had to wait in the Zoom waiting room. She hasn't gotten back to me yet. Oh, I can't get back in, she says. Hmm. I'm gonna try, tell her to leave and try again.
All right. Go to the email and send the invitation and just.
Yeah. I don't know about you guys, but I spend way too much time on Zoom meetings. We'll see if she can get back in.
I don't spend as much time, so sometimes I do have a hard time getting back in and maneuvering all these mute and stop the video and all those buttons down there in the chat.
I did forward Tracy the invite to see if that helps her get back on.
Okay, thank you. Oh, there she is. Great. She's connecting.
There we am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I couldn't find it in my email.
It's okay. So all the board members are here. We're back into session and the action item number one under possible action concerning suspension of board policy number 2141. I'm handing it over to Patina.
Yes, I moved that we suspend policy action 2141.
Do I get a second on that?
I second it. Lisa Dunnick.
By Lisa Dunnick. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Janet Testa. Please.
Dr. Kibon Owen.
Aye.
Ms. Dunnick.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Aye.
Ms. Ray.
Aye.
Ms. Eid.
Aye. Thank you for that piece of business out of the way. And now we have ostensibly the biggest item on our agenda in a while. And I'm gonna hand it over to Tracy Lambert to make the motion.
I would like to make, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I would like to make a motion that the board extend the employment contract of Dr. Tracy Youngberg as acting superintendent of schools through and including June 30th, 2021, subject to the approval of the commissioner of education, and further move that the board chairperson be authorized to finalize and execute the employment contract with Dr. Youngberg for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. I would also like to add that I could not be happier to make this motion and to encourage the board to follow in the committee's recommendation.
Hilda?
I would like to, I say happily that I second Dr. Youngberg's motion to continue as our acting superintendent.
Okay, motion has been made. I see some clapping hands. Is there any discussion?
Just to congratulate you, Dr. Youngberg and the staff, for a fabulous job in caring for not only the children, but the staff, emotional well-being, and physical needs and academic needs as well. I am, I'm proud to be part of this Board of Education who's appointing you right now.
Absolutely.
Lisa said absolutely. Anybody else? Mary said yes, thank you on chat. Anybody else?
I want to go on record and say I don't just endorse this because of her name, but because of her qualification.
Let's vote.
Well, I just want to say one thing. I want to say very clearly that this is an enthusiastic decision by the board. And it is not settling by any means because you stepped into this position in November and under a lot of strain and stress and have been walking through fire pretty much ever since. And, and we're in the midst of COVID-19. We want to make it clear that we're not just settling. This is a positive choice that we are making here today for the district. Is there any further discussion before we call the vote?
I have something to say.
Go right ahead, Jaime.
I want to echo all of the, my colleagues of the board comments. I do have high appreciation for Dr. Youngberg's work. And I like to say, you know, that we must give us full support, Dr. Youngberg. If I at any moment, I may have any of my talent, let's say, may support your work, may do anything to make that better, to make you stronger. Please don't hesitate to call me. I will have you back.
You're here. Tracy Lambert.
I just want to let people know, anybody that might be out there listening, reporters, the community, whatever, that Dr. Youngberg is being appointed for a year as acting superintendent because due to the COVID disaster that we discussed earlier, her senior's not getting graduation, her 093 appointment was pushed back continually. God knows when it'll actually happen, hopefully by this fall sometime. But her 093 confirmation was pushed back due to the COVID-19 breakout pandemic. And it's not no fault of her own. I have no doubts that she will make a fabulous superintendent. She's already demonstrated her ability to mend bridges, bring people together, and work hard for our students and our budget. But that this is in no way affecting her ability to do her job. It is simply because her 093 has not been accepted yet for the commissioner of education. She is as of yet still in acting. As soon as her 093 goes through, and I don't doubt that on her very first try that will happen, she will be, hopefully by this board, named as the official superintendent of the Wyndham Board of Education and Wyndham Public Schools. And she more than deserves this accolade.
Thank you for that clarification, Tracy, because I'm sure members of the public might be wondering what's up with that.
I got a couple texts already why I just asked. So I want to let everybody know it's not because of a lack of faith or a lack of knowledge or a lack of duty to our community. More than that, she's gone above and beyond. And it's because of a technical difficulty.
Yep.
It's under state statute, actually, that requires us to do it this way. The Connecticut General Statute's 10-157 requires her entitled to be acting superintendent at this point. And that's, there's nothing we can do about that. The state suspended all their meetings about these things. And they're still figuring out how they're going to proceed. We hope to hear more within the next month from them. Any further discussion? Okay, we're gonna have a roll call vote. Janet Testa, you're on.
Dr. Kibon Owen.
Aye.
Ms. Dunnick.
Aye.
Mr. Doyle.
Aye.
Dr. Galucci.
Aye.
Dr. Gomez.
Aye.
Ms. Haney.
Most definitely aye.
Ms. Lambert.
Did I get two ayes? Because I'm enthusiastically aye. Thank you, Ms. Testa.
Ms. Ray.
Aye, aye, aye.
Ms. I.
Aye, and it is unanimous, a round of applause for our new acting super, our official acting superintendent.
Here, here.
Speak, speak.
Congratulations. I must go now. I have another bit.
I was just about to start to say thank you, and Janet's blowing bubbles at me over my desk.
Hi, Jaime.
She's blowing bubbles. I don't know if you can see them.
That's awesome.
I don't know if that's COVID-19 safe, but thank you.
Just don't burst them.
I'm just kidding. Wow, so I want to say thank you, obviously, to the Board of Education members for believing in me, believing in my leadership, and for really standing up for the students of Wyndham Public Schools. You have been such a united and powerful front together. I'm, I'm kind of without words. I'm very happy to be entering the game, you know, the way it is right now. It feels really good. I am excited and humbled by the opportunity to lead the organization. I think it's a really good thing to provide some consistency in leadership at a time when the students and staff need it the most. Since I've started, since I started back in November, I've really tried to do sort of the same thing, be clear and compassionate and lead with data and logic, but at the same time be sort of sensitive to the whole lessons of the heart. So I've hoped that I've conveyed that to everyone. It's really what I've been trying to do. There are still so many unanswered questions about what 2021 is going to look like. But I know that together with my leadership team, both at central office and in the school buildings, we are going to be able to empower and support the amazingly talented students and staff of our schools. And I know together, we're going to be able to build this new normal. After COVID-19, I have no idea what that's going to look like, sound like, or feel like, but I know we're going to be able to do it together. So thank you very much for believing in me. And I am so excited to be Wyndham Public Schools acting superintendent.
You're here.
Yay.
Very exciting. We will celebrate appropriately when we are all able to be back together in person.
In the meantime, I expect a drive-by.
I love that idea.
Tracy, you can drive by all our houses.
That's right. Someone make me a map. I'll go visit all the, that's great.
We've got the map.
Thank you, Janet. So.
Stop him from tea.
So.
Socially distanced.
Is there any public comment?
I don't even know where my agenda is anymore.
Well, the last item on the agenda is public comment.
That's easy.
Anybody want to speak as a member of the public?
Someone does.
Oh, Aleke. Go ahead, Aleke.
I just wanted to thank the board for recognizing the hard work that Dr. Youngberg and Neil Weathers have put in. The, the work they've done has been respectful and effective. And I've been in the district for 21 years, and I can tell great things are going to happen under this team.
Thank you. Thank you, Aleke. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment?
Tracy and I are criers, and I'm holding it back right now. I hope you know that.
Same here.
I was a huge advocate for a search, Tracy, and I have no doubt that you have stepped up and taken care of this district in a way that most others, even with more experience, couldn't have. And I'm very, very thrilled to have you here.
Thank you, ma'am. I know, no ugly crying.
Anybody else?
Besides, yeah, besides crying, I also yell, and I cannot wait to jump out of this room and scream at my family. Especially Ayan, who said she should be the superintendent.
Uh huh. Isn't that great? Well, given that, there's nobody else stepping forward to speak during public comment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and we'll see you soon, Dr. Youngberg and Neil Weathers and the rest of the team.
I'm moved.
See you soon.
Seconded by Tracy Lambert. Do we need to take a roll call on this?
No.
No, just like you said, all board members.
No, there's no roll.
Okay.
There's no roll to adjourn.
One, two, three, Mark, you raising your hand?
Just raise your hands if we're all okay.
I'm raising my hand.
We're good. We got a majority.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Have a nice evening. Congratulations again.
Congratulations, Tracy.
Congratulations.
Upward and onward.
That's it. We got this.